Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to call this planning board meeting of April 20th to order. And I'll begin by reading the roll. John Chris, myself, present, Rebecca.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
And alternate members, Zach, Michael Bouchard.
Present.
And Peter Julia. And actually, everyone is here, correct? So you may join in our discussions, but not as a voting member this evening?
Thank you.
Now, on our official agenda, next is election of officers, which we've already done, so it was erroneously put there.
Yep.
It's no longer on the one that is printed out.
Oh, it's not? Okay. It was on the one that was sent out.
Correct.
If anybody has that version, we will not be doing that this evening. And then next up is the review of minutes.
Are we doing March?
Oh, yes, thank you. Let's start with March 16th before we move on to April 6th. So we're looking at March 16th right now. We didn't do a review of minutes at the community meeting, so we have two to catch up on. Thank you, Phil. I see a minor typo, if you're interested.
Now's the...
Bottom of the first page, second line down from the bottom, up from the bottom, I should say, "from" instead of "from."
Good catch.
Oh, and third page then, another typo. The paragraph that starts with "Mark," second line, I like this one, his new homer. See, I did have an actual real, not just typo question. Tell me if I'm wrong in this. Maybe you can just look at this later. I'm looking at the site plan reification for Tenney Mountain Lodge, and I don't see that the public hearing was opened. So maybe I'm dismissing it.
Let me check.
You shouldn't give these things to people who grade papers.
Well, it looks like, I mean, I know we opened the public hearing, and it was probably on page...
Because there was public hearing comments.
It was on page six.
Yeah, I think right above where Jonathan Van Scooter spoke, because up until that, it was just for discussion up until that point. And I know that we did open a public hearing at some point.
I'm just looking to see if we closed the public hearing.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I did. I didn't check that, actually.
It was very late at this point.
Well, I suppose if that's not in there, just...
So noted.
Yeah.
And closed.
That's all my pedantic comments on the...
I will move that we approve the March 16th minutes, which the edit says noted. Does anybody else have other second?
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? If you didn't catch that, Joseph was marking.
Abstain.
All right, and then we have our April 6th minutes, which was our community meeting with Judy Barrett and Barrett Consulting.
I was present, but I was excused on April 6th minutes. I was not a seated member at the time. So maybe that was handled the best way then.
I was excused.
I don't know what the best way to handle that is. I mean, I wasn't technically a member at the time, so... Maybe what you have there is the best.
Just not...
Not seated.
Yeah, but you're just not on there.
Right, so that's fine.
Yep. I would make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And abstentions, thank you.
I'll abstain as well.
All right, so the minutes are approved from both of our meetings. Up next, communications received by the board. Joseph, and I understand, I think we have some related applications correctly, correct?
Yep, that's correct. So you did receive a couple of communications, and those were sent along on, I believe, Tuesday. So, and those should be printed out here, too, just relating to the update on the subdivision, as well as the note from the Water and Sewer District on the accessory dwelling unit.
All right. Thank you. So we'll look more closely at those communications as we get to the pertinent applications on the agenda. All right, so up next are applications and public hearings. We have a continuation of a public hearing regarding Frontenac Development. Just to read the description here, continuing the request on behalf of the ownership entities for Cheddiron Lane, Skilip Lane, and Point of View Drive for approval of changes from the approved plans, including a cul-de-sac on Cheddiron Lane, a cul-de-sac on Point of View Drive, and Fire Sistern. And, Joseph, I believe we don't have any official updates from... Or actually, I... Do we have any updates on where we stand? If you would, yes.
Before I answer that question, if it's all right, just one bit of new business I'd like to bring up.
Yes.
We've been recently approached by the co-op to have high-speed internet installed on the project. And before I enter into final discussions with them, what I want to check with the board on is to see if there's any plan review or anything that would require any action from the board relative to that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it going to be overhead or underground?
Underground.
I don't think that would be necessarily a board issue.
I would... I don't think that's anything from us, but there might be select board approval, especially if you're requesting the town to take... That might be part of the discussion.
It might be good to... It might be good to just check with Town Hall at a time.
Okay, I can check with them on Monday night time. I've got to get more details from them, but preliminarily, I just wanted to check with you to see if there's any action required on the board's behalf. They did tell me they would provide an ASBIL, but that ASBIL would be separate from the ASBIL that we're going to provide you.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's a utility that's going to be in the right-of-way. It's, I mean, it will be in the... If the town is going to take over... Sorry, Mike is...
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Sorry, Mike was looking in a questioning way, and I was just trying to... I think it does make sense to discuss the proposal with the select board, especially...
Well, I want to make sure we cover all the bases.
But I don't think there's anything...
I don't think there's anything for us, no.
It's a kind of an after-the-fact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not part of our design plan that we originally put forth, but...
Right.
All right. So do we have any updates, or are we here for just...
Basically, I was just here to update you as to where we stand with different things.
Yep.
In answer to your first question, we still need to provide you, based on the last request, is a more detailed ASBIL for utilities, which we're going to be working on shortly. And other than that, just a quick recap of things that I'm aware of that are left to be done there before we come in for final. There are some stop signs that are left to be installed. We have some ongoing discussions relative to the removal of the retaining wall, the ASBIL plan. And then at some point in time, and I need a little bit of input from the board, there needs to be a title search done, so when the final deed is prepared. Could you inform me or let me know as to when that would occur, or when we should start that procedure? And also, if you could give me a rough cost when, not tonight, but at some point in time in the near future, so I can budget for that.
I think that was probably something best handled by the planning staff. Is that... That be correct, Joseph?
Yeah, that is a piece-of-the-road acceptance policy, so when it's appropriate, I think, you know, either...
I think that's a question for the select board.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a select board issue or a planning board? That's a select board?
Yeah, Town Manager Scott Whedon, I'm sure, would be happy to help, and I'm also happy to help facilitate it.
Assuming that has to do with the transfer of the road from...
The road right away from...
From you to the town.
To the town, correct.
That would be a select board issue.
Yeah, that's definitely not...
It's a select board issue, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing that I'm aware of, at some point in time, we'll have to get together with Mike Vicnally and establish a dollar figure for a maintenance bond.
Okay.
And other than that, all the major construction issues have been accomplished up there.
So can I ask, just in terms of planning future meetings and such, like, if you have any sense of timeline for getting the ASBILs completed and that?
I'm hoping by the end of May or mid-June.
Okay.
But I'll keep Joseph informed, and then if, you know, if it's necessary, I'm more than glad to come in.
Okay. Rebecca?
What about the Water and Sewer, or the sewer issue?
We've had discussions with that department, but I was recently informed that the general that was in charge is no longer there. So I need to find out who's going to be taken over, so we can talk to them again.
Was that the Chair of the Commission, or the...
No, a gentleman by the name of Jutton, I believe. I've only met with him once, but...
I think it's his company that has been supplying the Water and Sewer Director, and so he'll probably supply someone else from his company to oversee it, from what I understand.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to... Yeah, oh, Rebecca. I was just going to open... We have an open public hearing.
Right.
So I'm just going to open a public hearing, and in case any members of the public have any questions or comments. It is now 6:46, and we have a public hearing related to the Frontenac Development. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak, either in person or on Zoom? Yes? If you'd like to come up to the podium and identify yourself?
Remember, they're addressing the board.
Yes, and you're... Remember, you're addressing the board, please.
Yes. Sharon DiMarco, one point of view. We have made some headway with Mr. Hiltz. We are going to remove our stone wall at cost to us, another cost. I have a question, though, and I don't know where to go with this question. We had a meeting with Mr. Hiltz, the Town Manager, your consultants, the Highway Department, everybody, and left the meeting with some concerns about 10 feet of my land is, if he has the road approved, is going to be given to the town. So does that mean that my taxes are going to be reduced? Because 10 feet equates to, you know, footage. Also, who's going to maintain that 10-foot area? And what kind of liability am I looking at if that's the town's land?
Well, those are important questions, and as a planning board, I do not believe we have the ability to answer those questions.
Who does?
I would probably start with Scott Whedon, as someone who might be able to direct you in the right direction, if he can answer those questions.
Already been there.
Is there a boundary line change happening? So the land that's currently yours will become the town's. It's not your land at all. It's currently the... So if the existing property boundary isn't changing, you're not losing any land to the town. It's just that it's transferring... There's a substantial right-of-way that goes beyond the edge of the roadway.
Yes, 10 feet.
And that is currently, currently belongs to the Mr. Hiltz. And if that's transferred to the town, it shouldn't affect you.
And I just want to...
At least how I understand it.
And I just want to add, which is based on our understanding of the issue, with probably without the full facts and certain assumptions. And so this is not, like, legally binding advice.
Okay. Okay, because I don't know. In my deed, it shows that where the lot line is, that does show part of my property. Where my deed and my lot line is, it shows that it's on my land, not Mr. Hiltz's land, not the Town of Plymouth's land. So this is where my concern lies.
This is not something we in the planning board can resolve.
Okay.
I mean, it's obviously an important issue for you, but...
Those issues have to be decided between you and Mr. Hiltz. And then the town will receive the finished plan.
Okay, so you have no jurisdiction over that at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, what the planning board approved historically is still approved. That's, there's no change happening to that. The only thing that's changing is the ownership of the road for Mr. Hiltz.
We're not going to be here to adjudicate a lot line, and...
Which we really can't do. That's a civil issue that can only be adjudicated. I mean, you can talk to the surveyor if you have a dispute over that.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Dan Marion. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I do have an update on the replacement to Don Jutton of PVWSD. I was talking to Jason Randall, who's the superintendent of PVWSD, and he said he was taking over the operational aspects of John's responsibilities, or Don's responsibilities. Karen, and I don't know her last name, it might be Haynes, in PVWSD, is also taking over some aspects of Don's job, but it's Jason Randall that will be your main contact.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and...
Continue.
Continue.
I wanted to have a discussion. We are going to continue. I guess we can do that before we close. Do we want to continue to next month, where it doesn't seem like we're going to have any new information right by next month at this time?
Well, we can ask the applicant when he'd like to continue to.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We can... Is there a date you'd like to continue until?
You can put on next month as a continuance, and like I said earlier, if it's okay, I'll just update Joseph as we get nearer to that date.
Okay.
So can I just make a comment here? So I think part of the issue we're running into is we have butters and residents in the area that are coming to every planning board meeting because they're not getting... And we've had several months where we haven't had any updates, so I'm... Yeah, and I understand that. I just feel like we're... People are constantly coming to meetings, so I'm wondering if, just out of respect for their time, if we can continue it to June.
I'm okay with that, if the board's okay with it.
I mean, so you don't expect to have the ASBILs or anything before then?
Not 100% complete, no.
Yeah, okay. I'm not opposed to that.
So just put it on the June agenda.
Should we have a motion?
That's fine.
I make a motion that we continue this until June 15th? 15th? Yes, the 15th. You've got three meetings in June.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so our hearing is continued to June 15th?
June 15th.
June 15th. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is a continuation of a public hearing for a subdivision on 793 Texas Hill Road. And this is, we saw a few of you an hour ago at that site for a site walk. So this is PID number 234009000, 3.55 acres to be subdivided into three separate lots of 1 acre, 1.275 acres, and 1.275 acres. And we have gotten some new information since our last hearing, or our last hearing a month ago in this building, not necessarily since our last hearing an hour ago. And would the applicant like to address the board and say anything about the updates to this?
And there are some, there's a large copy of the plan there, too, if the board wants to share that.
Good evening. I'm Steve Ball. I'm at 579 Texas Hill Road. I'm the owner of Mountain Stream Properties that owns 793 Texas Hill Road. So there have been some updates since the last meeting. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mark, the surveyor, because he can speak to those a little bit better than I can.
Mark Vanderhayden, the surveyor, prepared the plan. So in substance, there's not anything changed to this plan, but since the last hearing, DES has done their formal review in the office and in the field, taken that plan, had a request for information, which we addressed, resubmitted back. And basically, that request was that DES needs to approve four bedrooms for any lot. It doesn't mean that's all the lot can support, and these can definitely support more, but in their review process. So that being said, at the septic level, you can have overlapping well radius, a lot of different things at the septic system design level. At the subdivision level, per their procedures, they approve a four-bedroom design. So we moved the well radiuses to comply, which makes it more compliant with the Town of Plymouth. Resubmitted that information. They issued a subdivision approval. And then, subsequent to that, we submitted the, resubmitted the, well, actually submitted formally e-file the septic system design for Lot 1. That's the smaller of the lots. And so we got approval for that. So those are two major approvals. And as I said at the initial presentation, DES reviews the information they have. They go out and do a site check, as we did tonight. Thoroughly, because that's what they do. They're protecting the water table and groundwater surface water state in Hampshire. So they look at that with that eye and the information we submit. So those... And I have copies of the approvals, but I think the town has been copied in on that, so...
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, so we have, I mean, I'm seeing in my stack of papers here, an approval for a subdivision of land. There is no septic system design approval that's happened.
There is, if I may.
Yeah, they have.
They have the subdivision...
Is that A2? I think we have it.
Approval for construction, yes?
Oh, you have the approval for construction.
Those were for Monday.
Is that just for Lot 1?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So the two waiver requests we had, one was for overlapping well radii, and presumably, are you abandoning that waiver request?
It would not be necessary at this point, yes, because as you see, the revised plan shows...
And then the other waiver request was for less than a 4,000 square foot area on Lot 1? And since that's no longer needed now either, is it?
Yeah, even at the subdivision level, it's not... They allow you to submit septic design information in lieu of a 4K area. So what I believe, the Town of Plymouth, not to speak for the town, they don't have... But it appeared very obvious, evident that you incorporated DES's standards. It's somewhat redundant, but that's fine. You know, they seem to be based on DES's requirements. So the 4K area, as I explained before, is large enough, back in the day, it was large enough to support a pipe and stone system and a replacement pipe and stone system. Long since then, we've got better systems. They treat the F1 better, the Presby and the Elgin and different ones. Our treatment system's a lot smaller footprint, but the state has kept the 4K area. So it's a large enough area. One system could be the biggest room plus a replacement. 4K is very large. Our systems today are a lot smaller.
So my understanding, it's still a waiver from our subdivision regulations as they're written, but it also, if it complies with the state, that obviously is an important factor in considering... Considering, are you checking the exact wording?
I'm trying to. I mean...
Take your time.
And feel free to read over my shoulder, but I might change the pages.
That's fine.
I have a question.
Yes, Neil.
What type of system did they approve?
So it's a Presby Advanced Environmental AES system.
That's the original. I don't know if you want to mark that one. Do you want to mark up this one?
Okay.
Joseph, do you have the originals? You want those? For files.
Any further comments from the board at this point, or questions?
I guess I'm just wondering, where is the system going to go? It's right in front of the lot.
2,800 or something?
I assume it shows 2,200 square foot.
I'm...
There's the actual approved, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. This is much easier to... Yeah, okay.
Do you have the approval for the septic design?
This is...
Your eyes on this are probably better, more effective than mine on it. So if I'm understanding this correctly, our 4,000 square foot area is a pre-approval, like, before stuff goes to DES, just to say, we've got this much area to put a septic system. And so we like that. We have that, I'm assuming, in our subdivision regs, our ancient subdivision regs, because we want to make sure there's space, that we're not subdividing land to not have, to not have a viable septic system. But with this approval on Lot 1, that means they've made a viable, or an effective septic system on-site, so we don't need the 4,000 square foot area. Is that... Okay.
Yeah.
It's going to raise...
Okay, that's fine.
No, I just showed it to you.
I am, you know, that makes sense to me now.
Similarly, when I do a design, I tell people, you can ask for waivers in state. I don't ask for dumb waivers, ones that are going to injure things, cause the system will fail or whatever. So you kind of limit the amount of waivers or things like that to the rules.
Is this for me?
In this one here, it's, you've got to pull on approved septic design. And the state allows systems to actually be rebuilt in place. We all throw that same note on the plan, just as a... Rather than redesign somewhere totally different, where the site's changed. It's a reasonable request, I guess.
Are there further questions or comments from the board before we open a public hearing?
What are your thoughts on the requirement for a waiver?
I mean, we've basically...
I feel like we've met the intent.
Yes, yes. I think...
I feel like the applicant has met the intent.
I think so, too, and I think, I don't want to rethink what our decision at our last meeting. I think the 4,000 square foot is in there for a reason. I think, I think we probably shouldn't have accepted the application as complete without that septic design. I think that makes for, like, that, this, you know, but we're past that point anyway, so we have this. We've got the...
We had the waiver request at the time, which we could have considered.
Right, but I think the applicant has met the requirements, so, you know, as I understand them, so...
All right, well, it is 7 o'clock, and I will open a public hearing. If there are members of the public who would like to address the board with questions or comments regarding this application?
They made a site visit.
Or on Zoom, or Zoom is actually clearing out, it looks like.
And just, so we did, in addition, receive a letter, and that was also in your...
Oh, yes.
It included the subdivision approval, the plan, and the letter.
And, oh, I actually do have a question about that. So there's a, I'm assuming that this letter meant the waiver request, not variances? Does that have folks who are reading that?
That's how I read it.
That was what I was assuming.
It does change, I think, some of the... Yeah, that's how I read it.
I mean, I guess it's...
The difference between what a variance implies and what a waiver implies, I think some of the language in here looks more like a variance sort of language, but it is a waiver, I think, unless somebody wants to correct us in that.
Well, is there, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to the letter that we received regarding the waiver requests?
This is the one signed by many members of the community?
It refers to two variance requests.
My name is Todd Moore. I live just on the road, 812 Texas Hill. Grace, my wife Irene, would be able to speak to that. She is away right now. I think she tried to join online, but maybe she can't speak. So we don't have any information regarding that letter to add to it or explain to it.
Can you clarify, was the, where the request was for addressing two... Can you clarify, was the, was where the request was for addressing two variance requests, was the intent, the two waiver, regarding the two waiver requests?
Yes, yeah, the two that you just discussed.
It is important to note that the, like, the bar for a variance is far higher than a waiver of our regulations.
And it's a deliberate separation, and it goes to the zoning board, we don't deal with variance.
Just for clarification, we understand the intent, and that's fine.
All right. And I guess while I'm up here, I appreciate the board taking the time to go out and actually visit the site, and the approved septic design on Lot 1, that's the one that I was speaking at, the last one, how the tolerances are very tight. I just wanted the experts, both the applicant's experts and the town's experts, to agree where the wetlands or the, you know, hydroric soils line is. And if it's 75 feet, then they meet the standard.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That is, that is what we have here, if you're interested.
Yes.
All right, we'll remind the board, if we do want to move forward, we, I know we're still getting in that new habit, but our findings are fact, in addition to, yeah.
You have someone, John?
Oh, yes. Yes, please, and identify yourself.
My name is Jen Morris, and I live at 790 Texas Hill Road, directly across the road. So one of my questions is, I was unable to attend the last hearing, and I'm wondering if there's been any consideration to the road condition and adding in presumably many, many new people to this, this area. Also, I noticed on the plan that one of the driveways, I believe it's on the second lot, would be directly in line with my driveway. And I'm wondering what the reasoning for that is, especially when the road is not, I don't believe that it's up to the standard size of a regular road. So, and also, it's extremely muddy much of the year. So I'm just wondering if the planning board has given any consideration to that, or if Steve has.
We have the driveway issue and the capacity of the road issue. Does anybody want to address that on the board?
I was thinking about the road issue. There were several people who expressed concern over the quality of the road and its suitability for development. I don't remember exactly which RSA it is, but there is a prohibition against premature development based on road quality, but it's very specific to Class 6 roads. It is not, it does not apply to Class 5 or Class 4 roads. I don't think the town has any legal justification to deny a subdivision application on a road that's regularly used by other people.
I have some follow-up questions, though.
Yes? Yeah, you may, yeah.
And I can address maybe a couple of points of your previous.
Okay.
Okay, so a follow-up question would be, regardless of whether or not the planning board has the ability to deny or not, what would be the next step, then, in being thoughtful about the road itself? I mean, does the, do we then go to the zoning board at this point, after the buildings have been established and where they're going to be placed? Like what, I understand what your position is, you have to follow the rules and regulations and approve or disapprove based on those, and if the applicant has met them, however, there's a lot more that goes into this, and a lot more impact to neighbors, the road, the land itself. So I'm wondering when that all comes into play.
I mean, road maintenance is not a planning board issue. In terms of upgrading the road, there would be probably some combination of the highway department and the select board, I would imagine, that would need to be involved in that process.
I think Mike set his hand up for a while.
Mike?
I had a question for Jen.
Okay, go ahead.
When they re-drain, put drainage onto the road, how far down Texas Hill Road from the intersection of Cummings Hill Road, did they improve the road? Like, this was 10 years ago, 11 years ago, maybe? Did they come down, or they only did Cummings Hill Road? Remember, they put those.
Yeah, so actually, the drainage, we gave them permission to drain into our property. Yeah. And then, I believe that the town also asked Grace and Todd as well.
Right.
But it goes, it goes all the way down, however, it doesn't accommodate. And I am not exaggerating when I say, when you drive on Texas Hill, especially during mud season, it's worse than driving in a blizzard. You can get thrown off the road easily because of the, basically the divot, the ditches and the roads made by tires, because it's so muddy. And our load limits go on in February, so.
I would 100% agree. But I didn't know, it was Jeff Hiltz, maybe we should have asked him, his company did it. Did they come down Texas Hill when they, because I didn't notice any of the concrete covers, the drainage would catch basins and then send it across?
No, we don't, we just have culverts on the side.
So they didn't do it? And I don't know, it is definitely a select board issue to, in the highway, as John said, and that would be the next avenue for improvement to the road. And I know Joe has his list of roads, and I would say the best thing would be to get a group of you on that road to request to be on the agenda for the next select board meeting, so that they are more aware, and I know Joe's aware of it, but.
Joe Fagin?
Yes. The more pressure the townspeople that live on the road, the more chance that something could possibly be improved there.
Because as it stands, they've already gone through in the last couple of weeks, at least twice, the town has, to dig out the ditches and the culverts on the side of the road.
And they could definitely do more.
Oh, yeah, that's, I mean, that doesn't even address the road condition itself.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's obviously a really important issue, and unfortunately, we can't really help you here, but highway department and select board is definitely the way to start that process.
Joseph, do they, during the building permit process, is the highway department and everybody involved in that process, and they have to go out and meet and look at the driveway and all of that, and they also follow up with that during the progress of the building?
That's my understanding, yes. So highway department needs to approve a driveway permit, and my understanding is he does go and take a look at the site in reviewing those applications. But, yeah, that's correct, those would go through the highway department as part of the building permit process.
Thank you.
Yeah, you answered one of the two points I was going to make, was, so point one is DOT, a lot of times you have high-speed travel, this is not, but lining up the access, because it's a point of access coming into the highway road, whatever, they'll line them up, or you separate them by a considerable distance. It's about a car coming down, being used to seeing somebody, they don't want to see five different access points scattered all over, so that's why we line them up. And further, as you said, it'll be a process, those driveway actually have to be approved, where they're located. For the subdivision stage, as a checklist item, you have to say, you know, show proposed drives. So those aren't actually exactly in that location. But it was lined up with yours just as a safety reason.
From our perspective, as a board, we just want to see that there's ability to put a driveway onto the lot, and then oftentimes, it might move based on input from the road agent. He kind of has the final say on where it goes. As long as there's evidence that you can put a driveway onto the lot somewhere, that satisfies the subdivision requirements to the best of my knowledge.
So I just want to address another issue that Jen just brought up, talking about sort of neighborhood character, the environmental health and things like that. And, I mean, it's really, at this point where we are, we can only hold this applicant to the existing zoning regulations. And we've got, I mean, a good example of a very rural area with, you know, as small a lot size as you can possibly do in this area. And really, to main, you know, and a lot of houses have gone in on this road in particular in the past 10 or 15 years. But to really maintain that rural character, like, I mean, I think the question is, and, you know, people might throw tomatoes at me tonight for saying this, but we might need bigger lot size, minimum lot size, to protect the rural nature of that area. And we are looking at a, you know, potential carrying capacity on a dirt road, and the answer is either to limit development or up the carrying capacity of that road. So, you know, that's kind of what, you know, we don't deal with the road, but we can, as a zoning board, or as a, as a planning board. You know, when we've tried, and that might not work, but, you know, this is not planning right now, this is reacting to applicants.
With our current regulations.
Yeah, so we can only, we can only hold the applicant to the regulations that exist, and it takes a, you know, an act of the town, the voting population of the town, to be able to change any of these things, so.
Are there other comments? Yes?
I'm Les Tetley. I live at 21 Bell Road, but we're in contract to buy the land down the hill from this piece of property. And I understand that this plan seems to meet all of the requirements, but like, being out there and seeing it, it just seems, like, is that actually 75 feet? Like, it's, just seems so close, and no one, we weren't measuring today, but from my, like, my, it's my understanding that DES did have someone out there. But has there actually been a wetland delineation? Like, has someone gone out there and said, like, oh, these species are present, and this soil is this, so, or has it just been like a generalized, like, oh, this is wet, but it's far enough away? Like, is there some other level of, of wetland importance that exists that would change what's allowed to happen on that lot? Because like, it can look great on paper, but when you go out there, it's like, how does this lot actually support what is being proposed?
Any members of the board with greater expertise than I in this have a?
I've experienced this question before, on another board. I think the issue comes down to the fact that if the town were to question that, we would have to bring in a similar, we, it would be incumbent upon us to bring in another licensed professional who could evaluate that. And then, if there is a conflict, we have a conflict between two licensed professionals that, you know, the gentleman standing behind you has a license to do, to write this plan. And I'm sure you're not questioning his integrity, but at the same time, you know, the process of evaluating that, it's kind of beyond us to say, you know, if it were a bigger project, we might have an engineer review it. I think for, I suspect we do that on major subdivisions, but I don't think this is one.
And it's not necessarily an engineering issue so much as it is a wetland issue, so.
Right, right.
And the state has been out there.
Yeah.
Is that, they've been out there to look at this. I mean, I think, really, we'd have to rely on them to give us an opinion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think there's some value to the fact that, you know, there's a license on the line here, and, you know, he's put his stamp on the plan.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark. I just purchased a property at 784 Texas Hill, right on the corner. And Rebecca, I'm, you mentioned something about the acreage minimum, which is something exactly that I'm thinking about during this process. If there were a, let's say, a two-acre minimum to build a home in this area, that's not in effect presently? Would it be possibly in effect due to a vote prior to construction starting at this? Or when you were speaking of that, it would be something future down the road?
Yeah, I would be, I think that anything that is approved, that might get approved tonight, the, that's what holds in the, we can't really, I mean, bait and switch an applicant and say, oh, the rules change even though we approved it. They're, the application, if it's approved, is under the regulations that exist at the time that it was approved.
So the current regulations are one acre minimum?
Not even that it did when they were approved, but when it was submitted.
When it was submitted, right.
When it was submitted, so one acre, yes.
Mike?
And we did talk about this about two years ago, going from one acre minimum to something more than that, and I believe it was a three acre. And there was quite a bit of pushback from the folks in the agricultural zone, where I think the majority of the town acreage was pledged to an organization called the Plymouth Agricultural Zone Committee, which I am a member of, and helped fund, found it 17, 19 years ago. So they were overwhelmingly wanted to keep it at one acre. And it was, I forget how many hundreds of townspeople and landowners that said, keep it at one acre. I don't foresee anything changing in the future.
Yeah.
Although it's worth noting, just that we are undergoing a housing project and a housing study, and we are looking for public input at various meetings, and we're going to launch a survey soon. And we are looking for, for feedback that would affect our thoughts about housing, including, like, lot size and stuff. Which, not to say, like, you know, you'd be one person with feedback, but if you're really concerned about these sorts of issues, then it's worth contributing to that process.
Yeah, I understand. And this, this whole application is hard for me to understand for that reason. I just assumed or hoped that there would be, say, a two or three acre minimum in an area like this. So if one house was being built on this three-acre lot, well, that's wonderful. Two homes being built on this three-acre lot, well, that's acceptable too. But I think the bulk of the neighbors and the people that are here are mostly upset because it's three homes being stuffed into three acres. That's how I perceive it. And I realize that the current laws don't, they are what they are.
Yeah.
And too bad, Mark. But that's how I look at this area. I know it's a personal thing. There's homes that are very spread out there, and all of a sudden, there's going to be three very densely packed together. So it's going to look different, it's going to take away from the property values of everyone around that area. And I think that's one reason the neighbors here are upset about that.
Mike?
And I, and I get what you're saying, and part of the reason, and I think it's, it's a positive, the reason why folks didn't want to see any more than one acre zoning is because of urban sprawl. And I've seen it in communities where they have three, four, five-acre lots, and everybody thinks, oh, that's.
It's a little bit of a sidetrack from our conversation this evening.
And, do you mind if I go on?
Be brief.
And it takes up all the farmland, it takes up all of the agricultural land and the forested land by splitting it up into houses, and then you lose those large tracts of land. And what this allows is for housing to take up a smaller piece and preserve the larger lots. And that's, was the thinking of many that.
And I understand, in theory, that sounds.
Let's not get into an argument about zoning, and if you do have input about how you'd like to see housing look in particular areas of town, definitely take part in this housing study.
Yep.
And you can find it on our website, under projects, and on the town website, that is.
Just wanted to voice my concern about the size of the lots.
Yeah, got it.
Just to make sure that all of the rules are adhered to if these lots are.
Thank you.
One more thing, members of the public can submit zoning changes.
Yeah.
To the board. So I don't know if we're eager to jump into a minimum lot size as a board quite yet, but we're not the only ones who can suggest changes for the zoning ordinance, so.
And the boards are always looking for people to get on them, too.
That's good, always the recruitment plug, that's important.
Thank you.
I'll just add, I think that, you know, even from a board member's perspective, you know, everyone, under John's leadership, we do, do our best to stick to the rules as they are written. Unfortunately, when you kind of walk in here as a board member, you have to leave your kind of personal passions aside. I actually would follow you and maybe want larger lot sizes out in that area. I live out in that area as well. But unfortunately, the way the rules are written right now is how we have to take this application and process it. So it can be frustrating at times, but you have to follow the rules set by the town. And the people vote on them.
But I understand that 100%. There's no shady business going on. You're following the rules, and the rule is there. I understand.
All right, thank you. Are there any further?
Picking ticks.
I'm wondering what the tick count is, that's all.
The tick count.
Anybody want tape? Tape works well.
Speaking of our site visit. Any medical equipment in your, in your mind?
We're making our, our audiences itching.
Any further public comments? All right, so it is seven twenty-four and I'm going to close the public hearing. So, board members.
Do our findings of fact on this?
If you're interested in moving towards approval, that would-
What's the best way to do this? Should we propose finding of facts and, or can you record them?
Typically the, yeah, typically with the zoning board, who's been doing findings of fact, the board discusses and then once the boards have their discussion, they'll propose a number of findings of fact, uh, prior to sort of a final motion, but after, you know, once the board's discussed and sort of agreed on what those facts might look like.
Can you use the pen? I'll, I'll, I'll offer the first finding of fact that the proposed subdivision creates three lots that conform to dimensional standards for the agricultural zone in both size and road frontage.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Want me to wait?
Yep, almost done.
I will make, suggest another finding of fact that, um, appropriate facilities for water and sewer have been demonstrated to meet existing D E S and town requirements.
Yeah, anyone disagree with that?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to think what else we should include.
Do waiver requests perhaps?
I will offer-
A little more complicated.
A fact that the waiver requests are no longer required as a result of the, um, D E S subsurface approval.
One waiver requested.
Just one, on that small one.
Well, there were two waiver requests. One was for the subsurface and we have a, an approved design for that. The other one was for the overlapping well radii and they've moved their, they've moved their wells, so the, the radii are no longer overlapping, which means it's no longer necessary.
So that one's no longer necessary. The other one, we still do have the four thousand feet in our-
It's still there.
So, so you'd like, you're, okay. So you're, you're suggesting that we should handle it because it's in, referring to our-
Our regulations ask for a-
Our subdivision.
For four thousand feet, so that one is, I believe, still appropriate.
Okay.
I agree.
So I will move that we grant the waiver request. So this is, uh, the reference for showing a four thousand square foot area for septic on lot one. We hereby formally request a waiver of the four thousand square foot septic area to be shown and we do have an approved design with a stamp from D E S that demonstrates that there is a suitable water, uh, sewage facility on that lot.
Lot loading capacity.
With lot loading capacity.
Get that, Joseph.
Sorry. That's why there's a recording.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I think we have to move to approve waivers.
Do we? I mean, I feel like we approve waivers all the time when we accept applications.
We do actually without really making a motion.
I don't know.
We can consider changing that going forward. Normally we don't have a motion for that, but we can consider changing that going forward, but, um.
Often I would say the final motion, it says to, you know, approve the, conditionally approve with the waivers.
With waivers, yeah.
But either way, I think would be acceptable.
I would say that, um, I'm willing to say that another finding of fact is that Texas Hill is currently a class five road, which is not, um, subject to restrictions on development as a class six road would be.
Is it class five? Is it Neil? Do you know?
It's not class six.
No, definitely.
No.
It might be class four, but-
That's what I'm, you know, Neil?
It's not a class six road.
So we are finding the fact to be it's not a class six road.
The finding of fact is that Texas Hill is either class four or class five, but it's not subject to, uh, prohibitions on development that are appropriate to class six roads.
Do we have, I mean, I, we keep doing this.
I'm just trying to-
Yeah, I'm trying to-
For a minor subdivision is probably, I'm-
This process I find so confusing.
I know, the, the findings of fact are new. I'm trying to offer as many as possible.
No, 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 and that wasn't, I, I think you're doing a good job finding, findings of fact.
Trying to be else one.
And I think the findings that you've got were the points that people were of the most concern.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a fact, but there, I mean, it is a fact. I don't know if it's worth noting that there are homes and other lots that are already developed along the road in that area. So it's not out of character or anything.
It is, yeah, that's true. More coming.
Seems a little more subjective than objective, but I'm not sure. Like I said, I get confused by the findings of fact.
I can clarify. A class five road consists of all traveled highways other than class six that are, a town or city has the duty to maintain regularly. A class five road can be anything from a one lane dirt track to a six lane boulevard.
So there you go.
Regularly maintained by the town.
Class six roads are not regularly maintained by the town. I think that's the difference. Well, they're all, some towns have classified seasonal roads too where they're seasonally maintained.
I think this might be adequate findings of fact.
Yeah.
All right. I, I'm going to be fine now. Any other findings of fact?
I don't know.
Are we ready for a-
I could entertain a motion.
Yeah.
You said yes, so you want to make it?
Okay, so I'm making a motion to accept-
Approve.
Approve the subdivision for Texas Hill Road.
With, with the one waiver request?
With the one waiver request.
Second now.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this application. Is there any further discussion? All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Okay.
Um, the application is approved. Um, and remember for the applicant, um, you do need to, um, provide final plans and a Mylar.
For recording?
Yes, for recording. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank all of the-
This could be for Joseph later on. Do you folks report it or do, does, do we?
Yep, well, so we'll, uh, need the Mylar and then the two checks and then we'll just put it in a tube and we'll mail it off to the registry.
Okay, great. I would like to thank the members of the public who provided comments on this. It is an important part of the process and also important to be involved in the zoning process when we get to that.
I also thank the applicant for-
Yes.
Accommodating the site visit. Thank you. All right, have a great night.
Thank you.
I just wonder how we got on loading capacity on that. Very surprised.
Okay, so, um, up next on our agenda, we have an application and public hearing, um, assuming approval or acceptance of the application, um, for seven eighteen Tenny Mountain Highway shed sales. This is the application for a site plan review from Pete and Beth Cormier. To operate a model shed display area on an existing gravel parking area at seven eighteen Tenny Mountain Highway owned by Bristol Central Square, um, L L C. This is PID two one three oh three two, um, lot size four acres in the agricultural and industrial commercial, um, development zones. And would the applicants like to come up and, um, address the board and introduce your application?
Hi, we're Peter and Beth. Um, yeah, so we, um, we were wanting to, as you see in your paperwork, have a display lot for our sheds at seven eighteen Tenny Mountain Highway. If any of, excuse me, if any of you are familiar with the, um, lot that we had at exit twenty-three there at, uh, New Hampton, that would have been ours also. Uh, we're looking to expand into this area. That lot was sold unfortunately, but we would have liked to expand to this area anyway, so. Yeah, so we, um, wondered if you had any questions for us.
Okay.
Basically, the, um, I will say that we are not planning on making any changes. We won't even take a shovel to that property the way it is. Our plan was to just put, uh, you probably see a picture, a picture of, um, one of our shed lots in another location, similar.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments at this point?
Oh, just, just a note before we go, go any further, uh, on the process, um, just, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So the, the process is in getting an application that we first look it over to see if it's complete. Um, it's also reminded the board, we're not looking for approval at this point. Um, to see if it's complete and if we deem it's complete, then we start the, um, process of seeing whether it's, um, acceptable for approval.
Okay.
And holding a public hearing.
So, um, how many sheds will be on site? And maybe it says this and I'm missing it, but how many sheds will be on site at any given time?
I think we're proposing, looks like, um,
About twenty.
And it will not always be exactly twenty because some will sell and they will be delivered and taken off. And then some will come back, but not always as many at exactly the same time.
So we will see, uh, increase in impervious surface. I think it's really inconsequential to what's happening on the site, but with the presence of those sheds, we will see an increase in impervious surface, but I think with a four acre lot.
Except that they're going on to gravel parking lots, which are already impervious.
Do we count them as impervious?
I believe, uh, D E S does.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. So it's all gravel. It's compacted gravel area, okay, great.
With the exception of the ones up by the road, that may be grass in front of the stone wall.
Are you going to have any type of office on the lot?
Well, yeah, we would usually have a shed, one of the sheds, uh, we sell, um, camps that would have a porch and we would use that temporarily as the, as like, as an office. But that is always for sale, so they come and go all the time, but.
Will there be power or, or water sewer facilities? Okay, all right.
No trash or anything, nothing.
Yeah, okay.
Will there be any, um, additional lighting?
No, our, our hours are pretty short, ten, usually ten to three, about four days a week.
You're not proposing any power anyway.
Of course, yeah.
I mean, there are solar lakes.
There could be solar.
That one surprised me.
Right.
So I just have a question for Joseph. If, if this looks like everything that's supposed to be on a, on a review is here and present?
Yeah, they-
For your-
They did request a couple of, uh, waivers, which are noted on the, I think, third page of their application form, due to certain things that they, they have not, um, they do not believe would be applicable. Um, it might not be the, I think that's the page-
This one?
Where they detail, yep, which things they, uh, so maybe that's the fourth page of the application packet.
There is no lighting proposed.
And you're going to have some signage?
Yes, we have explanation on number sixteen. We have a page of notes for checklist of the required exhibits and data. And on, there is a number sixteen there that explains the different signage that we have. We have, would you like me to read that?
I, I, I see it right here, yeah.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that the application is, uh, is complete.
Second?
Any further discussion?
I just want to make, yes, um,
Okay.
bathrooms. And obviously there's no, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's a need for bathrooms for customers and staff and things like that. I mean, that is something that I think we've had discussions with other businesses that have talked about ideas that they want to develop, so, um, I think it's just important to make sure that those facilities are there if they're needed.
As staff, we generally will go out to lunch. We'll have, use the restroom there or whatever. As for customers, there's no food involved. There's no drink involved. There's nothing that would really promote the need for that. And we are pretty close to the public area down near the Walmart and that.
We don't typically offer that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So we have a motion and a second to accept the application. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the application is accepted as complete. Um, so looking forward, um, to determining, um, issues for approval.
Public hearing.
We can talk along, among the board a little bit first, uh, before opening for a public hearing, but yeah.
I have another question. Um, what type of foundation do you put underneath the sheds?
On the lot, they come, they already come pre-built. They have si-, uh, four by six runners that run and then, um, then joists that run into those runners, into those, uh, four by six runners. So they're pretty, and those are all pressure treated. So that's their base.
It's like a Bob House?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a question of the dumpster I'm seeing in the, the staff report.
Well, that's on site already, isn't it?
Yes.
Dumpster is in the gravel area proposed for shed display. We should confirm with the applicant whether the plan is to keep the dumpster in the existing location or to relocate it. If it's being relocated, I'm just reading from this. So we can ensure it will not inhibit parking or circulation.
Well, the dumpster is planned to stay where it is.
It is, okay.
Any further questions or comments before we open a public hearing?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but just thinking about, uh, that area and how you move the sheds on and off property tends to get a little bit busy in, in that area, so I don't know if there's any, I don't know what would-
Traffic issues?
Yeah, traffic issues, um. I'm assuming-
The trailers, um, actually are moving in unusual way. They, if, once they back onto the property, they will be not in the road. But the trailer itself moves. They have, um, automatic-
So they're not, you're not building anything like over twelve feet wide?
No.
Yeah.
Typically, no. Anything over twelve feet wide comes right from the shop, from the customer. We don't display anything that, that big.
I would say, you know, my only concern would be coming out of the building, turning left on the Tenny Mountain Highway if it's busy, but it's, they're so close to the traffic circle that if there's a lot of traffic, they can turn right, go down to the circle, come around and then head back out. I mean, I, I really don't. I think there's a lot of capacity on that road that can be, can be utilized.
The state D O T has made a decision to reduce the speed limit to thirty-five.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
They just haven't done it yet.
Oh, interesting.
Will be helpful.
Give me a ticket.
That'd be pretty easy.
For that for ten years.
That makes a lot of sense there. Help all the way to the circle?
The circle's already thirty-five.
I don't know if it's quite that, well, it probably will be to the circle.
Well, the, the circle's thirty-five already.
Right, right.
Yeah, it drops from forty to thirty-five when you get to the circle.
You lost me. It is pertinent to this.
Yeah, no, that's good.
It is, I agree. It's a traffic concern.
Any further questions or comments before we open a public hearing? So it is currently seven forty-four and I will open a public- So it is currently 7:44, and I will open a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public on Zoom or in person?
If I might, so I just want to advise the board that I did receive a call from a butter who informed me that she was not able to attend tonight or provide a letter in time, but owns the, Marilyn Zabin, owner of the property directly to the east, and she asked me to relate to the board that she is concerned to make sure that the board looks at ensuring that none of the proposed shed display area gets too close within the setback or across the property line onto her property to the east, where she has a right-of-way to access the old cemetery among, as well as the other portion of her property. So just making sure that setbacks are observed and that sheds don't cross any property lines.
The setback does not apply to the driveway, though, because that's an easement?
Correct, it's her property with a sort of a private right-of-way, is my understanding.
It seems like there's a pretty natural barrier to getting to the property line just because of the edge of the parking lot.
It appears that the site plan sketch that we have clearly delineates that boundary that she's concerned about.
I believe there's a slope there, right, so if you put them on the slope, I think.
By going through this process, if we were to approve this, this is, I mean, if all of a sudden there were, you know, sheds all over the back of the building, then, I mean, that's a violation of the site plan.
Yes.
So we'd have to go, go through a process, so...
That's not what's being approved, proposed.
We're not approving sheds all over the place, we're approving sheds in these areas.
Can I ask a question? I do have a question. Well, we're still in public hearing, aren't we?
Go ahead, yeah.
Well, I guess 16C states that we have, we have a few three-by-four-foot-wall signs that we place on sheds facing the road. These sheds change and move as the sheds sell. Do you have a number of those signs that you are proposing?
It's usually one to two.
One to two.
Could be facing traffic or for customer viewing on the lot itself.
Joseph, how does the town deal with signs that are, that might be temporary in nature? I mean, a sign permit is required, right?
Correct, a sign permit is required. We do have a formula for wall signs based on the amount of wall area. Additionally, as I noted in there, there is another freestanding sign on the property, and we do only allow one per property, so, but the wall sign area is quite generous. It's either, I believe, two square feet per, let me, let me cite to you what it says.
I'm curious about the wall sign area and how it actually applies here, because these are structures.
Right.
On the other hand, there are also products being sold.
But they're temporary, too, right?
There's still signs.
There's still signs. I'm talking about the structures themselves, though.
Yeah.
And the walls.
Yeah, I mean, I hesitate to get into that because it's defined in the sign standards, but I would think that it would behoove the town to consider the total area of all the sheds facing the road when considering sign area that might be, might be available.
It'll probably be variable, but you can have an average, average...
And you can have multiple wall signs per property as well, so it is, it is not limited. So the maximum display area, if used in combination with other types of signs, allows one foot, one, sorry, two square feet per linear feet of building side on which the sign is displayed. So a 10 square, a 10-foot-wide wall could have a 20-square-foot wall sign. That's just an example.
Finding ticks.
That was a deer tick, too. The first one was a wood tick.
Well, are there any further public comments or, alright, so...
Did you actually open the public hearing?
I did.
I missed that.
It is 7:49, and I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
I guess the only, the only other thing I see in the application is that, getting to Joseph's comment about there's already a freestanding sign on the parcel, the application does express a desire to install a freestanding sign under 16D. In the future, we desire to install a three- or four-foot sign with four-by-four-inch posts. We plan for no illumination to the sign. Would that, in order for that to be approved, would the sign for the rental property have to come down? There's only one allowed, is that correct?
So in the...
The historic Arlen Farm sign, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, in the industrial commercial, we allow one freestanding sign per lot, but the maximum display area of 100 square feet, so you could do potentially multiple panels on one post if there's enough...
They could potentially put a sign below the Arlen Farm sign.
If there's enough square footage left from the original sign potentially, but it...
But that's, that's covered in the sign permit requirements?
There would need to be, like, just a, yeah.
We're not proposing a sign at this, at this point, other than the, other than the wall.
Well, the, the, the application does specify that you are, which is why, I just want to make sure that it's addressed that if your, if your intention is to put up a freestanding sign, it may have to be on the same board as the existing sign, because only one is permitted by parcel.
We did put that in there, thinking in the future of doing that, but if you're saying that that will also get approved here, then we're fine with that, too.
I think it's pretty clear in saying in the future you desire to install a sign. To me, it doesn't say, yeah, so I think that, that's pretty clear to me.
I guess the site plan approval, like, my only concern is that, you know, there's still, there's still requirements for the sign permit that you'll have to comply with when you do that.
We could probably add that as a condition of approval, that any, any sign needs to get adhered to the zoning ordinance.
Shall we just talk about some findings of fact?
I think one finding of fact is that they're not building any new permanent structures on the property.
That's a good one. I would offer that it doesn't appear that they are adding any additional impervious surface since the sheds are proposed to sit on a gravel driveway parking area.
Seem to be meeting setbacks.
All the dimensional requirements?
All the dimensional requirements, yeah.
I would offer the finding of fact that this is a business proposed in the, for a parcel that is shared in both the industrial commercial and agricultural zone, which does allow for commercial development, and it is a suitable use for this parcel.
Just keep coming.
You're getting away from me?
Yeah.
I'm surprised they didn't feel that one.
I think they just materialize out of nothing.
I would make a motion that we approve the application.
Sorry, go ahead.
I made a motion that we approve the application.
Any conditions?
No, just follow the town signage, just in any other town rules.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the application is approved.
We wish you luck with the business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an itchy meeting.
Okay.
For those of you who might not know, we did a site walk, and we're walking through the woods, sorry.
What do we get for doing sidewalks? Alright.
Three, so far.
Not any yet.
I found one right on site.
Alright, so up next on the agenda, we have an application and public hearing, 103 Yettin Road for an accessory dwelling unit. So it is an application for conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit on a two-acre property at 103 Yettin Road. This is PID 213018. And, yeah, this is your application? Would you like to come up and say a few words about your application? Identify yourself and...
My name's Eric Costas, my wife Mary Lynn. We're the owners at 103 Yettin Road, and we are planning to build an accessory dwelling on the property. That's basically where we're at, is planning to be on a monolithics lab manufactured home connecting to our existing sewer line.
Thank you.
And that's the short of it.
I was noticing in going through the application, there are a couple of proposed configurations of the lot.
Locations of the, of the particular unit, yep.
Can you say anything about where we stand on those configurations and approval and these sorts of issues?
Like, I think, I believe there's a water and sewer issue.
Yeah, so the, it's the first site, which is adjacent to the Calvary Baptist Church property line. That's where we settled on, and that's what we reviewed with the sewer and have approval there to our existing line.
Okay, this is the one you would go with, then, and not the one that's back?
Behind the property.
Okay. The proposed option one, that one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
It's over here.
Yep.
That's right, yep. And that is the one that's approved.
Okay.
Yes, okay, good, thank you.
So the driveway will come off your existing driveway?
Well, no, there's a, there's a separate application in with DOT right now for a new drive, for a second driveway on the lot.
Okay.
It seems to meet all of the...
Oh, that's, oh, you're on 20, well...
It's gonna be very close to the existing driveway.
Okay.
But because that driveway, you know, at this point, parks about four cars, having a pass-through, it doesn't really seem convenient for us, so...
So the driveway permit application, what was made to the town?
The state.
Uh, state, to the DOT.
So Yettin, yeah, they control Yettin.
Is it?
Yep. And it met all the requirements for, for sightlines and stuff like that, as far as we could tell with our survey tape, but...
And the water service, is it well?
We have a well.
It's a well.
Yep.
And we are actually drilling a new well.
Oh, really?
Not, not necess, not, wasn't necessarily in order to, to have the water capacity, but there was needs for it to begin with, so part of the construction project will be to put in a new well first and...
Serve both properties, or both dwellings.
To serve, to serve both units.
Okay, so you're, a new well, but it will still serve both homes?
Right, the existing home will serve the, the, the water will be, will be pumped to the accessory dwelling from the existing home.
I'm not sure, we've never had a public hearing for an ADU, so maybe we've been doing it wrong all along.
I mean, do we, do we notice a butters when we, for an ADU? I'm not even sure.
Yes, a butter's were notified as part of the process, yeah.
So we should have a hearing.
No, I, I, we will have a hearing, and it's been noticed as a hearing. My actual question, I was actually asking Rebecca was, do we do a acceptance and approval for a CUP or just an approval? I'm actually not certain of that.
It's not a subdivision.
Right, it's not governed by subdivision or site plan review regulations, it's straight out of the zoning.
Technically just do a approval.
Correct, and it does...
Sorry, Joseph.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the whole reason we did a CUP for the ADU was so that we would actually understand, because it was something that, you know, the state regulation, we had to do this, we just wanted to see what was coming in, so we made, could make sure that the ADU ordinance that we had was meeting the needs for, for the town and for applicants, so that, that's why we did the CUP.
Yeah.
CP?
CUP, conditional use permit.
And then...
Conditional use permits can apply to other, other aspects of planning and zoning, like...
I mean, the, the...
If they're in zoning.
Gives structure to things that don't necessarily sit in the zoning ordinance in a way that gives better, I think, better guidance to the applicant.
And for some things, like, you know, sometimes might, might make wetland crossings for driveways a conditional use permit, so that the planning board can approve it without having to go to the ZBA or some other organization, but from a perspective of an, of a instrument, it makes it easier.
Yeah, and this was just purely a monitor, reasons for monitoring just to see how it was being used. Because otherwise, it was just basically, it wouldn't even come to the planning board otherwise.
Makes sense.
Are we willing to enter?
The application...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, just to confirm from your earlier question, the application form does specify that a butter fees have to be paid and a butter's to be new.
So should we accept the application before then?
That's what I was just requiring. I don't think we need to necessarily. It, I mean, I don't think it would hurt if we did, but I don't think we need to by our regulations.
Okay, let's just let people, let's just open up the hearing then.
Alright, so it is currently 8 o'clock, and I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the public?
Alright. No one online other than Joseph from the town of Plymouth?
Yeah, I think so.
Correct.
It's 8 o'clock, and I will close the public hearing.
So do we need now a motion to approve? I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that.
Are you, are you thinking about findings of fact or...
That's my only question. I don't think we need findings of fact for this, do we, for your conditional use permit?
I think every decision of the board now does require some level of finding of fact, so, you know.
It falls within the town regulations.
Yeah, that's somewhat new.
We're still getting used to the findings of fact thing.
I don't know if I'm ever gonna get used to it.
It'd be a good topic of discussion for the zoning board joint meeting.
I'll make, I'll offer a finding of fact that the proposed accessory dwelling unit is in fact less than 1,000 square feet.
It meets, I mean, I guess I would add to that, it meets all the requirements of the, of ADUs in our zoning ordinance.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Is that a second or is that an amendment to mine?
That was an, I mean...
That's fine, either, either one.
I feel like we could list all of them, or we could just say it meets all the requirements of the accessory dwelling unit.
So we have a motion?
Yeah.
We, we do, and this is our discussion, I think, right now.
Part of this is substantiating a motion.
It's not a second, so it doesn't, yeah, this is fine.
Am I seconded it?
You did second it.
Yeah.
Okay, no, so we have a motion and a second then, yeah.
But we can, I mean, we can still discuss. Yeah, we can have discussion of the motion.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that the finding of facts are germane to the, to support the decision for the motion.
I, we have to do it before we vote, right?
Yes.
Meets all the dimensional requirements.
It, it has water and sewer approval.
The sewer blessing?
Yep.
Although we need to go too deep for a CUP.
That's my thinking. Okay.
ADU CUP.
I called the question.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second still on the table for a approval of this CUP for an ADU. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes and is approved. Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your patience for sitting through this meeting.
Of course, yeah.
Yes. It always works out that way.
Alright.
Another one?
I'm going to guess there are no informational or pre-applicational, pre-applicational, pre-application reviews?
I do not, don't see anybody.
Nope, okay. Other business from members of the board and planning staff. I'm gonna keep you here a little bit longer. So tentatively, if we get zoning board approval, we should have a joint meeting at our next planning board meeting. And I believe, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Joseph, that will go on as planned at this point, unless the zoning board also has an application that week, or even if they have an application that week.
They don't have an application.
So that, that is scheduled then, and...
And they did agree at their last meeting that they were willing to come to the planning boards Thursday, this, this time, instead of Tuesday.
This is on June, sorry, May 4th or May 18th?
I believe it's the 4th.
It's, it's the work session, so it's May 4th.
May the 4th.
May the 4th. That, yeah. Just, I mean, I was trying to think of some, and I, yeah, some possible issues to talk about. And as the town and the planning board and the housing committee are thinking about housing this, this year, I thought it might be good to ask the, for the input of the zoning board, which is one of the bodies in town that has not really been addressed yet by this process. If they have any input from their perspective as a zoning board in thinking about housing issues and regulations, things that come before them that may have offered them insight into this process. And we were talking with Barrett Planning this morning and they may or may not be able to also help facilitate some of that discussion. And either way, I think they might be able to provide some input into good questions to ask and that could be part of our discussion. I was also thinking it might be relevant to talk about if anything has come before them in the past like 12 months since the last time we did this, that might be informative for us as we think about our regulations. Rebecca?
Sorry, I only want to speak if you're done.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. So I was just gonna say that, I think, just making sure that in the housing area that we're talking about, anytime people are asking for special exceptions or variances pertaining to housing, I think that would be particularly helpful.
Regulatory issues, not broad, like...
Yeah, and then, yeah, if they start to, well, if we, if the conversation starts to move towards like, well, we need more of this, we need this for, you know, then make sure, I'd like to channel them to the public sessions that we're having already.
Fair enough.
Because even, in some ways, it'd be great if Barrett Planning was here, because maybe they can help facilitate that, but if they're not, we're really not in a place to be absorbing that information, that's why we have, that's why we have the, we hired somebody to do that.
Yes.
And I think the same thing with the, just the general discussion that we're specifically talking about, you know, is there one thing that keeps, people keep coming for special exceptions that maybe they need more clarity with a conditional use permit or...
Or there are things that are variances right now that might be a special exception, or special exceptions that might be better for the planning board as a CUP.
Yep. And if, yeah, if they're constantly giving the same variance, I just, I don't think the zoning board is that busy, but if there's a lot of the same variance, then maybe we need to look at our zoning ordinance and see how that's, how that might, you know, we might need to change how we're regulating things based on the needs of applicants.
And lastly, it might just be, I think we mentioned this already a little bit tonight, they might have good insights into talking about findings of fact and how we manage findings of fact, and they actually have been doing it like the entire time, as opposed to us. The only other thing I had on my, like, agenda going forward is the slightly amended site plan review regulations, which were sent out probably a couple of months ago at this point. Not really a whole lot has changed in them, I don't know if you had a chance to, you gotta...
Yeah.
Look at them when they were first sent out. And to approve those revisions, if you remember, these were the revisions that were given to us by the town attorney for a few small linguistic changes to make to clarify things. And the only thing that was, if I recall correctly, that was substantive, was the letters of credit issue as a means, as opposed to a bond, yeah. There wasn't a whole lot of substantive changes, there were some minor linguistic changes that clarified language and made it more airtight or watertight. And so we'd need a public hearing to adopt these. And I wonder if we'd like to, I mean, it could even be part of this ZBA meeting. I don't think, I can't imagine it'll be a very long process, I say that, I mean, you never know.
You just confirmed that it will be by saying that. So basically, we need to say, we could say tonight that we could make a motion to approve these site plan review regulation changes and move it to a public hearing.
I heard you just say move it.
And I just did.
Okay, second.
And that public hearing would be at our next meeting?
I, I see no reason not to do it.
As a short preamble to the, or postamble?
I think a postamble.
Is that a word?
It is now. Yeah, a, yeah, after the, I mean, I would just, I don't see the need to make the ZBA sit through other business, even if it's fairly...
Brief, hopefully.
Is this May eighteenth?
May fourth.
May fourth.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So the motion is approved and we will have a public hearing on May the fourth after our joint session with the ZBA.
Do you just have one more piece of other business? I know everybody's ready to go, but...
Yep.
CIP, that is also a recurring sort of annual thing, so I think even if the board, even if we don't decide on that tonight, I think at least for, for next time, the board should be thinking about reconstituting the CIP committee for another, another go around to get things going for the, the next CIP cycle, which will, you know, of course, base a lot on the work of, of last year's committee.
I do have a question that I want this board to consider before we authorize the CIP, and, and I guess the question, I don't know if we should reach out to the budget committee or select board, but we didn't do anything to prioritize requests last year. I think we tried to make it somewhat simple and simply asked, you know, departments to give us requests for what they wanted in what year and, you know, we did shift things around a little bit, but...
Are you, are you asking for planning board guidance in...
Yeah, I guess some, some towns ask for like a, a weighting scale of how important is this as, as a tool, but it makes the process a lot more complicated. I actually think that the process that June and Joseph came up with last year worked really well. From a technical standpoint, it really minimized the amount of paperwork that had to be done by anyone. So there was basically a master spreadsheet that was, it was a Google Sheets where Joseph had locked the summary but gave access to basically a spreadsheet or a worksheet from each page to each department head that they could put their information into and then it all got pulled into the master. It worked really well, but I'm not sure how we would prioritize, but I don't know if that's of value, I mean...
I think the department heads...
So, I mean, the, the department heads can make the request, and my, my question is, do we want to ask them to prioritize and say this, this is a must have or this is a would be nice to have kind of thing? Because when you, one of the things that falls on, fell, fell to planning staff this year, but it falls on the CIP committee was basically, you know, when things don't work out perfectly, you might have to shift things a year or two to, to make the numbers work. It's nice to have an idea of how important it is to have those requests in the, in the year that they're...
So just to clarify, are you asking for guidance on whether you should introduce those sorts of priorities into the process? Or are you asking for the planning board to be involved in choosing the priorities?
No, 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 I don't think the planning board should be involved in choosing the priority.
But that's whether, whether or not we want to go that route.
I guess the question is, do we want to, do we want to add an additional step to the process this year that might give us more information, but it's gonna make it a little more complicated?
I, I'd be open to hearing recommendations, you seem a little bit reticent, but...
I, I guess, you know, my, my question is, I mean, this is one where I would value the input of planning staff and select board and budget committee. Or even Zach's, you know, yeah.
I think personally, I mean, I think, you, you know, you have options, there, there might be a way to integrate something sort of into that format where there's a, you know, even another, yeah, another column where they could say, you know, rank how important it is, one to five, or something like that, as like a, maybe an in-between, that's sort of not, not fully, you know, not fully one way or the other, but could be a middle ground.
Color code it. I know it was really small.
The, the numbers are easier to, numbers are probably easier to tabulate than color coding in terms of formatting.
Numbers are some sort of narrative, it's like immediate need, you know, next couple of years or, you know, longer range need.
The only caution I would have there, within individual departments entering those numbers, they can do a great job of ranking their own priorities. Some individuals from different departments versus, like, one department versus another might be more prone to like want to mark everything as really important versus being more modest about it. So I think that might still need to be taken into account, but certainly within a department, that kind of ranking system would be very helpful.
I think it could just give a little more insight, and I think, you know, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the challenge is to encourage departments to not just be like, well, I need to rank everything, it's like, I need it tomorrow.
Right.
So it gets pushed up on the priority, but, you know, to really help the select board and the budget committee make some decisions about when things happen.
Yeah, okay, I, I think that's probably enough guidance that would inform the CIP committee moving forward at least. I'm good with that, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there public comments?
Yes.
You missed your chance earlier, I suppose.
My, my comment is about the housing meetings, and my comment at the meeting was about regulatory alignment. And the last meeting was about the character of the occupant of the housing. The next meeting was gonna talk about the character of the structure. And the problem here is, you have federal HUD codes for a specific type of housing, state codes, we have municipal codes and definitions, and we're an international building code town. So when it comes time to apply for the structure itself, to get an executive brief of the regulatory alignment is to have a description of the structure for the type of housing we so desire, because people are going to be making decisions based on the look, the character. You don't want an industrial looking home in the single-family residential. And the type of structures that we have here on Main Street, our architectural style is early New England whatever right now. But I think that's part of our process with the citizens to determine the types, character of the structure to meet the housing needs. So that's one of the things I was hoping that the town planner, being he has access to the computers of all those agencies' definitions, that might be helpful at the next meeting. Thank you.
What is the next step with that, John?
I was just gonna twiddle my fingers and wait for a motion, but, um...
Question instead.
The next step is that we are going to be, hopefully very soon, sending out a survey, which is an online survey. And the next step after that is in June, we are going to have another, that we are hosting as a planning board, another community meeting. We're still figuring out the venue for that, I believe. There were some people who were uncomfortable in the cafeteria, and so we're looking at maybe the senior center or other places. We're not really sure yet.
Are the questions the same six that we...
No, no, the questions are going to evolve and try to get at some other information that will dig a little deeper into certain areas and kind of change focus a little bit, but, so, you know, it's not gonna be the same conversation again. I imagine the structure will be not too different in terms of how the meeting is organized.
I meant the survey questions they're sending out.
Oh, the survey questions are gonna be far more questions, and, and some of that's gonna be demographic questions, some of that's gonna be about affordability and price points, it's gonna be about preferred housing types and what we need more of. It's a whole lot of questions and it's too much to really sum up right now, but that's being finalized right now and should be out soon.
How's it getting distributed?
It's gonna be distributed digitally. And we are hoping to discuss at our last meeting, but it went a little over, how we're going to, how we are going to do outreach, what our outreach strategy is gonna be to make sure we reach as wide a selection of people as possible, and maybe even people who don't have access to a computer, which, you know, we do have like the library and such where people might have other acts, forms of access and a few other places around town as well where the public can have access.
Computers at the senior center where those, those members, those, that segment of the population?
There's also the center going down the hill on Highland on the right, I forgot the name of it. I believe you're gonna have access to computers there sometimes.
But no printed version for people who...
There's not going to be a printed version that I am aware of at this point, no. And in fact, some of the questions, like, if you answer yes on this one, it will take another question. Whereas if you answer no, it will not, it'll not take you to that question. So it's hard, I mean, you can do that with printed, you can say skip the number, number four A or something and go to four B. But no, it's, it's, my understanding is going to be a purely digital process.
It's unfortunate because we're going to miss.
Yeah, well, I, I would be willing, if there's people who want to take the survey, I'd be willing to do it on the phone and enter stuff for them, if we've got a few people that can help people do that, I think that's really important.
Well, that's good to know.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Is it one that tracks the IP address of the sender?
I'm not sure what their method of keeping people from like dooming the system is going to be. That's a good question, it's like, if you, if you're doing it for someone, that's, that's a good question, though, yeah.
Can they open up a window for someone with a password?
I want Joseph flooding the system.
That's a really good question, or, or if somebody goes to the library, like, it could be the same IP, like, over and over.
We can figure out a way to have some, I mean, I don't want to be the only one that's, you know, on the phone call, on the phone with people. But, you know, but I, I do think it's really important to, I mean, I just know when I do surveys for work, I mean, I get people that like demand paper surveys and then I enter them in by hand, but, you know, I think it's just to make, we need to make it accessible to everybody.
That is our goal, to reach as many people as possible and find a way to hopefully, hopefully lead people to somebody like public computers, maybe do what you're, you're saying as well. And we're gonna talk about some of this on Tuesday on our next meeting.
And I think there was an intention to maybe do some number and maybe leave us some number of, of printed copies somewhere, maybe not as a, you know...
Certain places.
Yeah, have like perhaps locations or, or some method for that. So I think there was at least some hope that Barrett would come up with a, a solution for that, too.
So I, I will say Barrett Planning is very much tuned into making sure they get as broad a sample as possible. And what they have said is like, even with those issues accounted for, they often get really good responses from the digital survey, especially because there are people who don't make meetings, because they're single mothers or whatever, who prefer the digital version. And with all that being said, there are some people who don't have access or easy access to computers, and it is an issue. It's always a compromise somewhere.
If I can, yeah, if I, like I said, if I can help in any way.
Thank you.
I would like to.
Appreciate that, I will, we will talk about that next night on Tuesday, not for this, the housing committee next night.
Tuesday?
Tuesday morning.
Okay, okay, wait a minute.
Not us, the, the housing committee.
Can I...
You're back.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
That was not so bad for four.
No, it wasn't bad.